They did, but they needed to double check. Um, everything after the fact, so yeah, it didn't pass. Oh, of course, it has to be, right? So there's a lot of splits up for sale. Quite a few, yeah, and everybody's, everybody's hearing that there's gonna be huge, you know, acceptance. So prices are not gonna stay very high. Right? Yeah, yeah. I don't know that a lot of people can afford that. I mean, just for the engineering work, that was expensive. Yeah. I know, I know. There's a better opportunity for it. Right, right, right. That was the first one. Then they went to somebody else. They have to get into it, but they don't have to put the whole thing out. You just slipped in? Yeah, I don't know if it had the wall or not.
Is that, is that a lot or not a lot? Okay, I was gonna say.
Thirty, probably five or six years ago, well, maybe more than.
For what size?
Thirty.
Oh, get out of here. Get out of here.
But the assumption that they've gotta redo our three.
Yeah. Oh, fun, fun, fun.
To bail.
Yeah.
From Lillina? Yeah. Clear enough, clear. Yeah. Yep. Overnight.
Wow. We're gonna have a lot of tribunal cases heard this month, huh? What did you do differently to make it worth more?
I don't know. The order came higher. Yeah. This is the only one of two marinas where we actually own the bottle.
Gotcha.
And we have a deed to that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And then our dues are gonna go up because we need to have some money. Again. Six ball. Maybe grab Renee's pack.
Here's one. I've got one. It's okay. What I'm worried about is the rates for maintenance for our boat went from a hundred and ten to a hundred and seventy an hour where we store it up north. And that's pretty consistent, like Walstrom's, I think, is a buck ninety-five an hour now to change the oil or buff the outside. Get out of here. So.
Where are you at?
Our boat's in Somerset Point, yacht club. Lake Charlevoix.
Oh, okay, okay.
By Boeing City. But we store it with a crew out of East Jordan called Mobile Marine Services.
Oh, okay. We're up in North Florida.
Okay.
And their, their rates were way up.
Yeah. Uh, Harbot, a four hundred SS formula? Very nice. Yeah. It's badass. But it's not badass when, well, I normally do everything, but then since COVID, they kicked me out of the marina. So I can't go wax it or do the oil or pull the outdrives.
Let us do that. They just got bought out by, I mean, the Pan Am, I think.
Okay.
North Park. We have inside heated storage.
Diddle.
Yeah, they won't let us buff, they won't let us, um, do the paint.
Yeah, insurance, I guess, changed with COVID and screwed us all up. What do you think? Okay. I guess we can, we can call. What do you think?
Yeah, well, that's cool. I think if you have, yeah.
Evening, everybody. Well, uh, it's six thirty-one. We'll call the regular meeting of the East Bay Charter Township to order. And if with that, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could, could we do a roll call, please?
Yes. Ferguson.
Here.
Richardson.
Here.
Leonard.
Here.
Wassum.
President.
Walters.
President.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Edley.
Here.
Thank you. Um, with that, I don't think there's anything startling on here, but anyone have a conflict of interest they need to address before us? Paul, you don't get to exclude yourself for being a part of the zoning crew. You're in. Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to the agenda. Any changes or alterations? If not, we could entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for the East Bay Township Planning Commission for Tuesday, March fifth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Uh, we've got a motion by Mindy, seconded by Rhonda, for support of the approval of the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next is the meeting minutes from February sixth. Again, thirty thirty-four.
Oh, geez.
Gee.
It's okay.
That's a crazy number. I won't be alive.
Any alterations or updates we need to make to those?
Make motion to approve the minutes of February sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Support.
Thank you. We've got a motion by Cindy, seconded by Steve, for approval of the meeting minutes from February sixth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up, public comment. Those wishing to speak, come on up to the lectern, just give us your name, and, um, you've got about three minutes. Where did, oh, we moved it to here. And I don't believe we have anybody remote, right?
We have one consultant that's gonna be presenting on a later agenda item.
Not a whole lot of general public that way. Okay, sounds good. Going once, going twice. Okay. We'll move under correspondence. Claire, looks like we've got a few things on our desk.
Yes, you received, um, two emails under correspondence related to the zoning ordinance update. One from Mary Thompson, the other one from the Watershed Center. And then, um, you have two items, again, related to the zoning ordinance in your packet that were received before the packets went out.
Wonderful, thank you. Any questions for Claire? Okay, on to Mindy with the Township Board report.
So, um, there were two meetings last month. The first was the regular meeting. Um, we, uh, voted to sign the contract with Wade Trum to work on the sanitary sewer lift station design. Um, we also had lots of planning items on the agenda, the noise at the car wash, the Lavender Hills project, um, the Beach District, um, the planning department changes. Um, the second meeting that we had, um, was just for book, uh, the Board of Review appointments. And then with the changes in the planning department and the additional sedum, is it a sedum fellow? Um, we need more space so that we're gonna redo the, the media room copy center to add a couple other workstations in there that are gonna be separated off from the rest. So that was the Township Board meetings, but I also wanted to report on elections. Election was last Tuesday. The early voting, nineties of early voting was held here at the township with five, with four additional townships, so five in total. We had a hundred, I'm sorry, we had two hundred and twenty total voters early voting. A hundred and twenty-nine of those were from East Bay Township. Um, the absentee ballots, we had two thousand and forty-six from East Bay Township, and we had eight hundred and ninety-two that actually went to the polls last Tuesday for approximately thirty percent of the voters in East Bay Township.
Any questions for Mindy? Thank you. Paul, ZBA.
Yeah, we had, uh, there was a meeting held on, uh, February sixteen, excuse me, February thirteenth, I believe. And the only item that was on the agenda was, uh, doing the, uh, schedule of meetings for, for the year. That, that was the entire meeting itself. Uh, we do have, um, uh, Louette Frost is now the other, uh, alternate. So we are at full strength as far as the ZBA board.
Thank you. Um, okay, and last but not least, Claire with planning and zoning.
So most of the updates are agenda items tonight. Just wanted to mention two additional items, though. Next Monday night, TART is gonna be before the Township Board, um, looking to submit two DNR grants to support the three-mile trail. So those came before the Parks Commission a couple weeks ago, and so we're looking to, um, slowly chip away at the cost of that three-mile trail with various funding mechanisms. And then the other item I just wanted to update you on is, this is related to the, um, True North gas station. If you'll recall, we discussed that there was some additional property on that, uh, some additional room on that site. True North is willing to partner with the township to have some sort of, like, a public plaza that's connected to the trail. So Beckett and Raider has done some conceptual design. It looks really cool. We're gonna have, um, like, potentially public art, um, viewing, wetland viewing area, some seating, and just have it kind of be like a, kind of a civic, civic plaza for the township, which we haven't had. And we heard in the master plan that that was desired. So we are applying for, it's a T-Mobile grant, it's a hometown grant for rural communities. So it's a fifty thousand dollar, um, grant, or planning to put that in at the end of this month. And so hopefully we can move forward kind of in tandem with this new gas station going in. They told us that they'd be happy to, like, do some grading and site prep as a part of their, so.
That's great. Any questions for Claire? Okay, uh, under item number nine, business for the Planning Commission. Sounds like we've got a few folks on the line and also with us here today to talk through the Beach District visioning. And Claire, maybe I'll kick it back over to you to kind of talk through where we're at.
Sure. So we have, um, been doing kind of a soft launch of the Beach District visioning. We've been holding quarterly meetings, and we've had a number of you attend those. And those are really with our stakeholders, business owners along the corridor, just an opportunity for networking and information sharing. So we've held three of those quarterly meetings on the Beach District on the corridor, the most recent of which was last, um, last Thursday morning. So have really good turnout at those. We have also put together an implementation team. You'll see the members that are on the implementation team are listed in your packet. So we've got representatives, business owners, as well as agency partners and residents along the corridor. So the implementation team has met once, um, and they will continue to meet monthly. They have, their, um, their responsibility is twofold. So the first piece is, of the implementation team is helping to guide this process. So not so much guiding what the results of the process are, but helping guide the, um, making sure that this is an inclusive process. So how can we really engage the business owners, the residents, other stakeholders, the general public? And how can we really make sure that we get as many voices to the table through this visioning process as possible? And then the second piece we're looking for from the implementation team, and you'll see Dan, Dan is a member of the implementation team, is that we're looking to help the township think through, once we have our action plan and our priorities and what, what physical investments we wanna, um, put into this corridor, like, how are we gonna pay for it? How are we gonna turn this to, uh, into a reality? So hence the implementation. So once we have our action plan, we're complete with that, we'll really look to the implementation team to help us figure out kind of a feasible way of implementing these, these priorities that we hear from the public. So, um, did wanna update you that we have selected two consultants. One is Flight Path Creative, and they are gonna be doing the marketing and branding for the corridor. So they're gonna be helping with the banners along the corridor, those light pole, utility pole banners. We're looking at getting those installed in, um, April of this, this spring. So have them up for the charrette, which we're planning to have in May. They're also gonna help with creating a directory of all the businesses. It will be a website. So it'll be an interactive directory where you can go on, see what, what businesses. We're really trying to create, like, a sense of place, and so it's like, come, shop, eat, stay in the district. You don't need to leave the district. You can kind of get around in the district, multimodal, placemaking. And then we also, in addition to the online interface with the directory, we're also going to have a printed directory that business owners can have at hotels, restaurants, those types of locations. So we're working with Fight, Flight Path Creative on that. And then we also have Beckett and Raider, and Sarah is here today. They are going to help lead us through the visioning process. So that is gonna be all of our public meetings, our stakeholder engagement sessions, the design charrette, the public survey. So, um, Sarah is here to just give an update on kind of what the scope of work is for the public visioning process. And, um, I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Thank you. And I'm happy to be back for the Planning Commission. It's been a couple of years, a couple of new faces, though. So Sarah Capriva, I'm with Beckett and Raider out of our Traverse City office. And, um, you have a work plan in your packet, kind of how we're gonna move forward through the project. So, so far as Claire mentioned, um, I met with the implementation team to kind of talk about ideas or questions for the survey, get their look at the work plan, get any input on that. And then now I'm kind of here to just update the Planning Commission and inform you of our process. I'm also looking for any input, um, that you may have as you're reviewing this work plan and, um, you know, where we're headed, if there's anything. I don't wanna miss anything. So, um, making sure that you're able to, um, let me know if you have any, you know, comments, questions, or concerns. So right now, we're working on developing that public survey, so that's that task two point one. Um, working through a draft that I'll be sending over to Claire here shortly, and then also having the implementation team maybe take a brief look at that, just to make sure that we touched on all the items that we talked about in our last meeting. One of the big things was kind of the multimodal in connection to TART. I heard that a lot during the implementation team, um, meeting. And then also connecting both sides of the street. I mean, a lot, this stuff's familiar with you, you know, for, um, as community members, um, what the, what the challenges of that area can be, but also some of the areas that we can leverage to improve, uh, throughout the corridor. And then we are also planning currently the, um, public input sessions. So this is kind of gonna be a little, like, mini charrette process where we do some stakeholder engagement, open house, public open house, maybe take a day to go through, uh, design or show what we heard during the, the open house, and then come back out, um, with another open house to get, um, kind of review and make sure that we heard what you said, but then also a little bit of refinement from that. So we're working through setting up dates for that, um, and looking to have that down at Harbor Brook Hall, those open houses at least, right, right down in the district, um, for people to participate. And then maybe some other, um, opportunities participate up here at the Township Hall, uh, to split that up. So I think that's looking like, um, I think it's the second, second full week of May is potentially when that, that would happen. Looking at, that's the week of the thirteenth for those, so. Um, and during that charrette process, looking at the, uh, vision for priority sites, so that's task two point three in your scope. We'll be talking with Claire and the implementation team a little bit more about specific pro, project sites or potential sites. Um, and those would be, um, sites that the property owners are also willing to have that discussion and redevelopment on those properties as well. So, um, you'll probably see me a couple more times throughout the process. This'll go on for the, for this year. Hopefully be, have a plan by the end of the year that you will, um, be able to see. And then we'll be able to get right into the action items for the implementation.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions for Sarah?
Yeah, I've got one. Uh, just so, um, for the audience that may be tuning in, but I'd also be curious. You talk about using, uh, an advanced economic modeling program. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Um, so we use a program that allows us to pull data based on a zip code, um, and then be able to tell you either where you have gaps in your types of businesses that you have there, or maybe where you have access into certain types of businesses. So we can look at the corridor and say, okay, maybe you should look at, um, adding into your zoning district laundry mats or something, you know, something like that, that would, um, allow you to look at that for the economic development component. So we use a third party that we gain the information from, and then we analyze and put it all together and give you something that doesn't, isn't too data-y, you know? Yeah.
When you get that information and you get the report, do you compare that to other locales to see how we rank or things that could be put in?
Not typically. We just look at what your information is. We might look locally in the area, and because it does deal in zip codes, it's a little bit broader than, you know, I can't nail down just to East Bay Township. It's everybody that's four nine six eight six, um, type of, type of situation.
Okay, no, I was thinking about other townships that have, you know, downtown areas and things of that nature. Uh, if there's any comparison to say, hey, this would be a good idea if you had X, Y, Z.
Yeah. I mean, we could. I hadn't really thought about it. And if, I guess if you have a suggestion of a similar area that, that looks and functions like.
Like Rose and Ray, Florida.
Paul just, Paul just got back. Well, can I just add one thing?
Yeah.
So I think one really powerful piece of this information is that it can, like, it won't just look at the geographic area of the corridor. It'll be looking more, as Sarah mentioned, more broadly at the region. So you can see kind of like where your retail leakages are, and so like, where are people leaving this area and going elsewhere to seek services or where, you know? So then it kind of helps the township better identify, like, what are some of the demands? Does somebody want to be able to go get their daily needs, milk, you know, grocery store type amenities here? And are they not just because they're, you know, there, there isn't those, um, amenities there? So I think it can be really helpful from a zoning perspective, but also as we do these priority sites and develop a vision for some of these properties, figuring out kind of when we market these sites, being able to better articulate, you know, we want a coffee shop here, we want, you know, this is, this is what this community needs. And that would be based on some of the data that Beckett and Raider will collect for us, as well as what we hear from the public. So it'll be kind of taken in tandem.
Thank you.
And we did use it on the Traverse City Master Plan, too. So if you are interested in kind of a deeper dive into that, you can look on their master plan website for their economic development chapter to see kind of what comes out of it. That's, you know, obviously a little bit bigger and broader, but it's using the same information that's in that.
Okay, thanks.
I have one question that was tied to the survey itself. So beyond the website that you have set up for kind of all the following along, if you will, for the public eye, can you talk about kind of the marketing strategy to get that out, out, even outside of that website? Like, will you guys be putting it out on social media? Will we be partnering with any regional agencies that are here on the ground? Like, can you describe that a little bit?
Yeah, and I think Claire's probably better to talk about it because she's thought about some of these. So we still need to have a discussion about exactly what that looks like and providing, you know, providing, um, some of the marketing component, at least, you know, what the brochure looks like or what you could push out on the social media, but then kind of looking to the township as well to actually do the push out of that. And partnering with the businesses that are already there, you know? Last week, Claire had mentioned to that group that, um, there's gonna be a survey coming out, and hopefully they'd be able to pass it along through their businesses and their channels as well. So not only utilizing, you know, just the township, but the businesses in that corridor.
Yeah. I'm also just trying to think of, like, Networks Northwest or Traverse Connect, all those kind of regional agencies, because as much as we live here, like, we're like everybody else. We're passing through that corridor, as is everyone around here. Like, literally everyone. I'd be real curious to get, like, other people's outside feedback, too.
Yeah, yeah. I think we'll, that, we'll do some demographic questions to better understand, like, where, are you a business owner? Are you an employee? Do you, are you a commuter on the corridor? And so, yes, we'll definitely be sending out press releases. We've got Traverse Connect, Traverse City Tourism, kind of all of those agencies, TART, Beta, that are engaged in this process. And so they will help us, help us spread the word. We've also discussed, in addition to the public survey, in the summer, doing, and this was Sarah's idea, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea, was doing a, um, like, a survey targeted towards corridor, like, visitors to the corridor, so not necessarily just tourists. It could also be someone coming and dining at Alexandra Inn, you know, rooftop bar, but better understanding kind of what is driving people to, to those destinations as, as the users. So, and we've talked with Traverse City Tourism to kind of figure out if there's a way that we can partner to get that survey out.
Awesome. Great idea.
Reinventing the wheel, so.
Yeah, 'cause we're kind of have this survey during an off-season of the, of the corridor. So, yeah, trying to find a way, but still trying to connect. So if you have any ideas on how to reach out to, um, anybody that may be using the corridor during the summertime, you know, that would be, it'd be all ears, I guess, for that.
Every single person that's waiting to check into the state park. Make them do it online.
And they are, you know, the, they're also engaged, um, the DNR is engaged with the, uh, corridor as well. So there could be an opportunity with the state park. That's a great partner.
That's awesome.
Is your, um, this is also getting to the survey. Given that a lot of the solutions or, you know, changes, I would imagine, might be pretty expensive, is, is the survey gonna gauge a willingness to pay from residents, business owners, um, as part of the survey?
Pay for the improvements?
Yeah.
Yeah, pay, tax yourself, whatever.
Great question, yeah.
Yeah, I think the survey is gonna prioritize, what, what are your priority projects? So like, we can't pay for everything. We certainly can't do it all in the first year. So like, what are your priorities in ranked order? Because we kind of know what people want, but like, what do we wanna do first? And then kind of help us figure out a timeline for it. But in terms of paying, that's really gonna be the next phase. And that's gonna be, there's gonna be education involved in terms of what, what those different financing options are, because a lot of it is, is, is education to the business community, to the Township Board, to the wider public about, about what those financing options are. And you're not necessarily, you know, the business owners, property owners aren't necessarily paying more for, as you know, for those improvements, just depending on what, what different financing mechanisms we're looking at. And we, we also hope to learn from other communities that have, that have implemented these types of.
When you do that part of the survey, are you going to include some type of an estimate on the cost?
Not for this first survey, no.
Are you talking about for each amenity?
Well, I mean, if you have the project, you're asking people to prioritize projects and pay for projects, or at least their willingness. I would think they'd have to have some idea about approximately what these individual programs would cost.
I mean, that could even be an activity that we would do at maybe one of the open houses, too. You know, kind of like, you get money, you get so many dollars, right? And you can put them in a cup and tell us which one is your priority, you know, with dollars, or fake dollars, um, for that, you know? So the survey is one component of it, and then we do have some opportunity if we want to expand on some of the results we get out of the survey, um, at the open house to gather more input. So that could be an activity we could look at, maybe putting in there.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm thinking this is a little bit further down the road. When you start ante-ing up and saying, it's great to have ideas, but what's it gonna cost and who's gonna pay for it? Well, are you willing to pay for it?
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
Does this vision, this, you know, work plan, has it been thought of for this rewrite? Or any consequences from that?
That's a great question. So we have done kind of some light changes to the Regional Business District with this rewrite. One is we've, we're allowing multifamily as a use by right. Right now, it's special land use permits. We're trying to, like, think a little bit more diverse about mixed use, incentivizing kind of more diverse housing along the corridor, workforce housing. We are changing the setbacks, so having parking in back, having, um, we've got some updated landscaping standards, so having, you know, street trees in between the parking lot and the sidewalk. So those types of things we have added. But part of this visioning effort will help us inform, are there some additional zoning changes that we need to make to, to better, um, to better implement this vision? changes that we need to make to, to better, to better implement this vision?
Any other questions or comments on the beachfront corridor plan? Okay. Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate you being here.
Yeah, just for the feedback.
Yep, absolutely. Looking forward to it. Okay. Next up is the food security incubator. Sam, Claire, you guys kick us off.
I am going to turn it right over to Sam.
Hi, guys. Sam LaSousa, the SEDOM Community Development Fellow here at the township. And so, I'm here to give you guys an update on kind of the community garden and farmer's market, and where we're at with that. So, the 2023 Master Plan identified it as a community desire to have a farmer's market and a community garden, specifically over here in the East Bay Corners region. That was something that was identified as an opportunity. We have this beautiful property here, so it kind of made sense to utilize it for a farmer's market. And as an opportunity with SEDOM came about for some implementation dollars, they wanted to allow the SEDOM fellows to implement something within their timeframe in the townships that they're serving. And I was looking at, it had to meet a master plan, or a Parks and Rec plan, or something like that. Ours worked out great because it met both. And so, in looking at that, I thought, yep, I think I can get a farmer's market launched for about $10,000, as far as buying like picnic tables, a tent, some marketing to get the logo together, those types of things. And so, we're moving forward with that process. The Parks and, Parks Commission just recently approved the application and the guidelines and rules for that, as well as for the community garden. And so, that'll go to the Board of Trustees next week. And so, that's kind of where we're at. We're also applying for, or have applied for $100,000 to build a portion of the community garden here on the property. We should be finding out about that next month, but we're in April, yeah, in April. So, that's coming down the line as well, so we'll have more information on that. Those guidelines and application were approved as well. So, we're kind of creating a food security incubator, is kind of programmatically what it's turning into, because we'll have community garden with a farmer's market, all kind of happening on the property here. And so, what we're looking for from you guys is they're also setting up an advisory committee to oversee it all. So, that will contain a member of the Board of Trustees, a member of the Parks Commission, and hopefully one of you guys. So, tonight, we're looking for anybody that would like to volunteer to be part of that advisory committee that'll, they'll work initially to approve farmer's market vendors for this season. So, we're going to be going, hopefully launching that application in the middle of this month, closing it in April, and then there'll be a review process, and we'll approve the number of vendors we can fit in the, in the market over here, obviously privileging East Bay Township farmers and producers. And then, they'll also oversee the application process for the community garden, once that's constructed as well, so. And then, any issues that may arise as we go through that process, but.
Can you share the time commitment and, you know, maybe day of the week that the committee may meet?
Yeah. So, it'll be, kind of the bookends of the year probably will be your heaviest lift, because you'll need to approve the, hopefully all-in-one meeting, approve the farmer's market and community garden participants for that year. This year, it will just be the farmer's market, so that will be kind of an easy, soft launch into the duties. Throughout the season, as long as there's no issues, you theoretically should not need to meet. You would really only need to meet if there's an issue with the vendor, and they've put in an appeal because you, you know, they're breaking a lot of rules, and, you know, that kind of stuff. So, throughout the season, hopefully you're not meeting a lot. I don't anticipate a ton of issues. My experience with the Sarah Hardy Farmer's Market, we haven't had a ton of, a ton of problems that have escalated past just the market manager being able to deal with them on a day-to-day basis. And then, kind of closing out the year, planning for next year, that kind of stuff. So, I'm thinking a quarterly meeting schedule with maybe the summer one not needing to happen, because if there's no problems, and then, obviously, somebody can request a meeting if they need an appeal for whatever reason. It's kind of similar to the ZBA. If they don't need to meet, they don't meet. Oh, and I was thinking like, Thursday nights might be a nice time to pick, because it doesn't conflict with any of your other meetings, and it would be maybe once every couple of months, so.
One last question before let other people stew on it, because you're not going to see me raise my hand for this. The $100,000 grant opportunity, who is that through?
That's through M-DAR, so.
Okay. Perfect. Jody Gruner. I was just gonna, I was just gonna push you that way. You've already found the well.
And there are a couple other opportunities for funding, like, we've talked about with the Public Spaces Community Places. I mean, we're, we're still looking at other opportunities to build more of that garden as well, so. But we're hoping to get this, this chunk would be really nice.
Nice, nice. Any volunteers besides me? We got one? All right. Thank you, Renee. Or Rhonda, excuse me. Almost, almost got you, Renee.
For review and planning commission are my max.
But it's the farmer's market. It's kind of fun to talk about.
It does sound fun. It does. I'm not going to argue that.
Awesome. Thanks for your work on this, Sam. Thank you, Rhonda.
Paul said I get free samples.
Love it. All right. And our last item of new business is the zoning ordinance rewrite, a thrilling update, and the most recent revisions.
Matt Kern is currently restarting a new meeting and bringing our consultant in, because there's a little, it sounds like there's a little technical difficulties, but I will, I'll introduce it.
Okay.
And then, I think by the time we're done, we will, we'll have Andy back joining us. So.
Okay.
Zoning ordinance rewrite, as you know, a long time in the making to get this draft in front of you. So, we are very appreciative of our subcommittee, as well as kind of everyone that's been engaged throughout this process. I think it's, you know, it's reflective of the master plan, it's reflective of a lot of input that we've heard over, over the past several years. So, Giffords Webster has been working with the township to facilitate this rewrite. We have been kicked off in September of 2022. So, for the last 15 months, we've been, the zoning ordinance subcommittee has been meeting regularly, oftentimes bimonthly, reviewing sections and having policy discussions about the zoning ordinance. So, I did want to just highlight some of the key policy discussions that, that we've had with the zoning ordinance subcommittee. You can't really, can't articulate everything, but I think that this is a nice opportunity to take this draft, and we're going to really be able to take a detailed look at it in our three work sessions. So, one of the, you'll see there's nine kind of policy areas. So, we talked a lot about non-conforming structures and uses. Right now, we basically treat everything the same. This new zoning ordinance update, we're looking at having Class A and Class B. So, Class A is really all of our single-family residential uses, and there's more flexibility for adding on to those homes. So, with some protection, environmental protections, those types of things, but still allowing some added flexibility for a single-family residence to be able to expand and improve their property. Right now, they're very limited in what they can do. We talked a lot about development procedures, so we're discussing, there's a, where, this new draft has site plan only for uses permitted by right. So, it will, all uses permitted by right, those will still come before the planning commission, but they won't be, they won't be a public hearing. Public hearing is for special land use permit, for PUD, for site condos, for, you know, any type of zoning amendment. So, that's best practice, that's recommended, and actually required by MEDC for certification for the redevelopment-ready community process. We talked a lot about the environmental overlay districts. So, those have been combined, the Forest Lakes Overlay, Mitchell Creek and Baker Creek Overlay. We've combined those all into one sensitive environmental area section. And then, we have also added floodplain protection, steep slope protection, wetland protection, and graining permits. So, we, and you'll see that there's some summaries that we kind of tried to put together, three one-pagers on kind of some of the key changes that we've made related to environmentally sensitive areas. We have added site standards related to agritourism, outdoor cafes, alternative energy, that includes wind, solar, and onsite, onsite, like, battery storage. We've updated site standards for recreation and gathering spaces. We've done some updates to site development standards, so reductions in the parking minimums. We've updated the lighting, the private road standards, access management, updated traffic impact studies, pedestrian-oriented commercial design and landscaping, so kind of some of the more prescriptive requirements for developers. Landscaping is getting a lot more prescriptive, and you'll see in a lot of other communities, it already is more prescriptive. East Bay is pretty limited in terms of the landscaping requirements. We've updated the sign standards to make sure they're content neutral, and that they're sized appropriately. So, like, on the Regional Business District, we're making them smaller, but in some other areas, where, say, there's a church in a residential district, we're allowing them to be a little bit larger. So, we're kind of just trying to make the, the sign requirements a little bit more appropriate throughout the township. Streamlining standards for accessory buildings. My hope is that you guys will not review many more special land use permits for pole barns, that those can be handled administratively. There, there still will be some that will, that will come to the planning commission, but we're having accessory buildings tied to the parcel size and not to the home size. So, if you have a huge parcel and you have a tiny home, you're, the size of pole barn that you're allowed is more, should be relative in size to your parcel, so, so, you know, sized appropriately, so you're not negatively impacted by having a small home. We have also updated residential zoning districts to increase density and allow more housing options within the urban growth boundary, and we also have reduction in density outside the urban growth boundary, as proposed. So, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail right now on these one-pagers that summarize our changes, because I think those will be more helpful to go into detail during our work sessions, because those are more content-heavy. But you'll see what, we've got a one-pager on housing, so basically, all the changes we've made to all the different zoning districts, kind of what, what exists and what's proposed. We also have a one-pager on all of the changes recommended to the sensitive environmental areas, again, what's existing and what's proposed. And then, there's also a one-pager on all of the proposed changes to the site standard, both landscaping and buffering, and pedestrian-oriented commercial design, what's existing and what's proposed. So, this is not an exhaustive list of all of the changes that have been made. The exhaustive list is what is provided by Giffords and Webster, and that's basically every single change that has been made. And I think that's a helpful documentation, so that you can use it as a reference tool when you're looking at the existing ordinance and the proposed. You can see every single place where a change is being proposed. So, looks like we've got, Andy has joined us again. The only last thing I want to mention is that Giffords Webster has sent an email today just with an update to what articles we'll be reviewing each month. So, we will get that posted on the website in packets, so that you'll have ample time to review it ahead of time. But in March, our March 19th work session, we're looking at reviewing Article One and Three. April 16th will be Four and Two, and then, May 21st will be Articles Five, Six, and Seven. So, we will send that out to you all, but just wanted to let you know that we'll be kind of breaking it up into chunks by article to review. Any questions before I turn it over to Andy? Andy's going to go into more detail about the actual draft.
I think fire away, Andy.
Okay, great.
All right, great. I hope you can hear me. Good evening, Planning Commission, and Claire, and Sam, and everybody else in the room that I can't see. I would like to share my screen, so I'm going to try that real quick. I know that Matt gave me permission, so I should be fine here. Okay. I hope you can see this Adobe Acrobat.
Yep, we can.
Okay, great. So, really, I just want to go through just the structural aspects of the Clearzoning formatted document. Claire gave a good introduction on kind of the themes we, we spent a lot of time on, themes we revised greatly. All of that is in the packet material as well. I'm happy to talk about it if you have questions, but I'm really not going to dwell on that right now. I'd like to just click around the Clearzoning ordinance and kind of just tell you why we believe this is now a little bit more intuitive and user-friendly. So, generally, we have a, a table of contents, and we have four tabs at the bottom of every, of every page. One is the table of contents, which leads me right here. One is the how-to-use this ordinance, kind of how-to page. One of them is the use matrix, which is based on all, all of the zoning districts and where things are permitted. And one of them is the zoning map. So, these four are at the bottom of every page, so you can access these four key areas very easily. The, the actual zoning pages, we will start with, let's say, Article One. So, we separate Clearzoning into seven different articles for easy reference, in our opinion. The first one is purpose and intent. It's kind of, I hope the township attorney can forgive me, but it's kind of that boring legal language that makes an ordinance an ordinance. There's not a lot here that interests our planning commissioners on a day-to-day basis. So, I can move over to definitions. Definitions is tab two. It's a full list of the definitions. You can click on them easily, and then get back, using the back button, you can just get right back to the, the last page you're at. Three is zoning districts. So, here you'll see how all of the zoning districts are laid out, as well as a few of the supplemental standards that are really necessary when they're, when they're tied to a particular district, or tied to a particular geographic area, or natural feature, like the environmentally sensitive areas Claire just spoke about. Article Four is the use standard, so these are those more thorough standards that are just tied to a particular use in general. Five is a site standard, so this is obviously a very relevant article for you as planning commissioners when you're reviewing a site plan, per se. This tells you how the parking standards, you know, the lighting standards, landscaping standards, et cetera. Article Six is the development procedures, again, another pertinent article for you, as it details, you know, the process, the process, and the standards for review for things like site plans, and special uses, and planned unit developments, et cetera. Seven is really administration or enforcement. It, it details the duties of the planning and zoning department and zoning administrator, deals with non-conformities, deals with enforcement penalties. So, these are really the four, the seven articles we lay these ordinances out into. We definitely want the interactive aspect to be a big part of this, the way this ordinance document performs. We also just want to, we also cleared up, just in our opinion, a lot of language overall in terms of like, when something needs to be written once, it's just written once. It's not written three different times throughout the ordinance. We also wanted to just remove unnecessary references, so, for example, sometimes you get a few major sections of an ordinance that, or you have a few lines in a provision that reference, you know, a site plan review standard, or a, or a landscaping standard that's already kind of assumed in the development, or already, not assumed, but already laid out in the site plan procedures, that site plan shall follow the landscaping ordinance. So, there's just, we, we try to get rid of the repetitive standards when we can, but when we do think one is super necessary, we do link it back into the ordinance. For example, I'm just going to click around here, find a good one, if you don't mind. Let's say places of, or actually, I'm going to start in zoning districts. So, you can get through the ordinance in many, in just a couple clicks, pretty well. So, let's say moderate-density residential, an allowable use as a special land use, as a place of public assembly. You click there, you can read the, the use standards pertinent to a place of public assembly, and then, there might be references within it. So, in this case, it says that for a place of public assembly with a capacity of 350 people or more, planning and zoning department may, may require a traffic impact study under this section. So, then, it ties you right over to the traffic impact report section. So, we, we see the ability to bounce around easily. to the traffic impact report section. So we see the ability to bounce around easily while also, we also paid attention to just removing some of those kind of unnecessary reference statements. Like Claire said, we pulled a lot of our work together from different areas and reorganized them into a more central area at times. So one of those, the ways we did that was kind of consolidating a bunch of the overlays, like the Forest Lakes overlay, the Mitchell and Baker Creek overlays, and put those into the environmentally sensitive areas supplemental We also did that in a large part when, in our commercial pedestrian-oriented design standards, we took a lot of that from the Airport Service District, which we're proposing to be a defunct district now as we think it needs to group best to the NC District, I believe, is what we kind of are proposing to rezone it to, which is a new district. And I can get to that in a minute because I think the NC District is really important to talk about as a new district. But broadly speaking, we just try to, try to encompass different, different themes under one heading when we can, instead of having them dispersed throughout the ordinance in a, in a sometimes inhale here manner. I'm just going to bring up the districts real quick because I think they're an important, it's an important place to start. So for example, like I just said, we are proposing a neighborhood commercial zoning district to follow the master land use plans, neighborhood commercial future land use designation. So this was really a district that came about through the process. We, you can click, again, you can click here, actually what I'm going to do is you can click here at the end in the design standards, you can click and find, you know, find that the front yard can be increased when connecting to a shared access drive in accordance with the shared, or the access control measures. So then you're brought to a site standard or section. And then this can also link to other sections within, such as the tree species shall comply with landscaping and buffering. And then we go scroll down to the tree species list, and we refer to the Northwest Michigan invasive species networks planning guidelines. So again, we kind of, and then the back button's helpful. So you can click the back button to get right back where you were without losing your spot. With the process too, I just want to make clear that we did consolidate a few districts as well because we felt like that was important. One of those was that PO was largely rezoned to this neighborhood for commercial district. Those PO professional offices uses either went to the neighborhood commercial district or the industrial district when they were more intense and maybe not as appropriate for the NC district. We removed the Airport Service District, and we rezoned that, we're proposing to rezone that land to neighborhood commercial, this district right here. And those Airport Service uses either went to NC or they went to the Regional Business District. The former East Bay Corners land, we're proposing to rezone to this district, the neighborhood commercial district, and have those uses go to this district as well. And then lastly, the former Local Business District, I believe that was only a couple parcels to begin with, we're proposing to rezone to this neighborhood commercial district and have those uses go to the neighborhood commercial district as well. I'm happy to take a break and answer any questions, but I'm happy to show you anything else with kind of the clear zonings, interactive features as well. But I can pass it back to Claire if you're okay with that.
Sounds good. Any questions off the top of your mind for Andy?
Andy, I have one for you.
Yep.
As, as we work through kind of article by article, is there a format that you want to see adjustments, alterations, suggestions in? Do you want it in like hard copy, or can we tag it in the PDF itself, like through a comment? How do you want to see that presented?
Yeah, that's, that's really helpful. I mean, I think it would be really nice if Claire can distribute the, just the draft ordinance in the clear zoning form, so just in the PDF form, to the commissioners. And if you can, just using Adobe Acrobat or using like Microsoft Edge, comment in there, any suggestions you have. I think that's helpful.
Is there a mechanism that we can all be working in the same document?
You, you can't work all within the same document, to my knowledge.
Yeah, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to get like Open Meetings Act. We'd want to be careful with that. So I would say just send your comments to me, and then I'll make sure they get to Andy.
Sounds good. Because we've got it, we've got it all electronically. Andy, I'm just sitting here playing with it as you've been kind of going away at it. It's amazing how intuitive it is. That was the word that I think we were focused on, just to kind of follow along, if you will. But yeah, I mean, it might take a little updating of Adobe, but they do a pretty good job of being able to track comments and things like that. So shouldn't be too tough, but we might.
If you want to put them on a, I'm happy, let me know if you want me to print you a copy, a paper copy of the ordinance, and just mark up the paper, hand it in to me, and I can scan it and get it to Andy as well. So whatever your preference is. I think, you know, if you're, if you're interested in some grammatical editing, because there does need to be a little bit, then I think paper is also helpful. So whatever your preference is.
Yeah, Andy, if we could get your personal cellphone number, too, that'd be great. Some of these people are sick, and they love this stuff. So.
Sounds great.
Don't do that. Don't do that. Thank you so much. We appreciate the update. And I know this crew, they're going to have some comments for you, but that's not a bad thing. And I have done this in the past professionally. It is loveless. So we greatly appreciate all the time all of you have put into this because it is a lot of work.
Yeah. And I would, the other recommendation I would have is that if you have any content changes that you want made, discussed, definitely bring those up at our work sessions. If they're grammatical, send them directly to me, and we don't need to go through those during the work session, just to be able to kind of separate those two items.
Sounds good. Okay, Andy, thank you for joining us this evening. We appreciate it, and I'm sure we'll, we'll get some more feedback to you in the near future.
Great. Yeah, thank you for your time. Thanks for allowing me on.
No problem. Have a good evening. Okay. Any other comments or questions on that before we move on? We're going to have a lot of time in the future to get in the weeds. Next on the agenda is Public Comment, Can we, yeah, can we get you, or Sam, yeah, I hope so.
Thank you, Sam.
That'll work.
It's not part of my three minutes, right?
You're clear. You're clear.
Good evening, Carol Pusell, East Bay Township resident. Just a couple of quick things in regards to things you commented on tonight. For the Beach District visioning process, please consider in, as you reach out to citizens, to get a really wide scope, not just the people in that district, and not the outsiders that are passing through or even the insiders. So I'm offering to you that our large, larger lake associations have a lot of contact, that we can spread the information and get, encourage people to participate in your, in your survey. So we live here, we, many of us live here. Some of us do pass through with being snowbirds or just occasional people. So for instance, I posted on our Spider Lake Facebook page information about the opening of the farmer's market this coming May, and we got a tremendous amount of likes on that, the percentage compared to some of the other comments. So there, we're reaching out to people that live in our community but also come on vacation. And then also people who have the STRs who will then share that information with their people. So please keep us in mind. Claire's really good at that, but just wanted to get that in, in again. Then for the farmer's market, or not the farmer's market, but the, yeah, the farmer's market and the community garden, if there's any way for more citizen involvement, we'd be happy to reach out to our, our people in the lakes area to give more input on that. Of course, we're, many of us are very environmentally active and interested, but we have a greater, greater span as well. And then for the zoning ordinance, can you give us some advice on what's the best way for us as citizens to continue to give input in that process? We'd really appreciate that. Thank you for all your time.
Good evening. My name is Ralph Bettnerz. I'm a lakefront property owner on Rennie Lake. I also currently serve as the Rennie Lake Association Board President. I want to thank the Subcommittee Planning and Zoning Director and staff, and Giffords and Webster consultants for all the work they have done on the draft zoning ordinance. I appreciate the use of the clear zoning tool to organize and layout the seven articles of the ordinance for the ease of reading and locating content. I am grateful that the public input was included at the beginning of the process via the Riparian zoning workshops, and that the Subcommittee members listened to and incorporated public input during all the Subcommittee meetings. I'm especially thankful that the intent and requirements of Section 231, Forest Lakes Overlay District, were incorporated into Article 3.8, Environmentally Sensitive Areas Supplemental Standards, and the development standards were enhanced with native vegetation restoration requirement for the vegetative buffer strip. These supplemental standards for environmentally sensitive areas are critical for the protection and preservation of the township's water resources and sensitive landscapes for current and future residents. I do have some additional concerns, but those are expressed previously, and I'm sure they'll come up during the work sessions. I look forward to your review of the draft zoning ordinance during the proposed Planning Commission work sessions. And again, I thank you for the opportunity to comment on this important work throughout the entire process. And thank you for your service to East Bay Charter Township and its residents.
Going once, going twice. Okay. We'll close the public comment. Thanks, everybody. Future agenda items, nothing jumps out at me. Claire?
I have one, just wanted to make one thought on citizen input and a recommendation, and would be interested to hear the Planning Commission's feedback. But I think what has worked well with our Subcommittee, going, working through the zoning ordinance Subcommittee, would be to encourage the members of the public to send comments on the relevant agenda items for each work session at least eight days before the upcoming meeting. So then that, your correspondence will be included in the packet. Encourage planning commissioners to read through those comments in addition to, you know, reviewing the ordinance sections and articles. And then I would also encourage planning commissioners, if there's any items that you say, hey, I want to take a little closer look at that, then that would be, you know, staff's, that would be kind of our, our.
Flag.
Notification to, to, to take a closer look at the policy. So one example is residential lighting. That's been discussed a lot by residents, are interested in having some standards related to residential lighting. That's not in the current draft ordinance. But if that's something that the Planning Commission wants us to explore in more detail, that's something that we can look into. So I'd say some of these topics that haven't been incorporated into the draft ordinance, I would be looking to the Planning Commission to provide some policy guidance on, on what you'd like to see moving forward.
Sounds good. Thank you. Good, good idea.
I was just going to ask, Claire, so with the work sessions, do you think, say, we were discussing Article One and Three, would we follow a format similar to what we had in the Subcommittee where we get the, you know, green, blue, purple, whatever there are, changes to the existing? Or are you going to lead a discussion? Or what, I mean, what's your plan?
Well, I sure wish that Andy was still on.
Yeah.
He's done that quite a bit, but I will get some, I'll get some clarification, and I will kind of rely, oh, Andy's still here. Perfect.
Oh.
Andy, you're muted, but I'd be interested, yeah.
I'm still here. Can you repeat the question? I was just fading off.
Zoning ordinances have a habit of doing that. No, I was wondering if you thought that during the Planning Commission work sessions, we would follow a similar, similar format to what we did in the Subcommittee where you kind of highlighted the changes to our existing ordinance and where there were language changes and what were proposed, and then kind of let the discussion follow that way? Or was there some other format you were thinking of?
I think that that might be a good idea. I mean, Claire and I, and Joe, who's our lead on the project with Giffords Webster, we'll put our heads together and try to figure out a good way to do it. But I think that's preliminarily, I think that's a good idea. And maybe we start with kind of the, this cross-reference spreadsheet that we, am I sharing, like, am I still sharing the spreadsheet?
You're sharing the zoning ordinance.
Okay, I'm still there. Okay. Sorry, I'm going to, I guess I could share the spreadsheet, but it's also in your packet, so maybe I won't. The, the cross-reference spreadsheet has just like a three-sentence description where a lot of the changes happen. So maybe we just start there and get a little bit, you know, Joe, Claire, and I can get a little bit more detail on the specific changes that happen per, per section, and just focus the conversation there. So I think that's a good place to start.
Seems good to me.
Claire, what do you think?
Yeah, no, I think that's great. I think with those one-pagers that we also put together would be helpful, you know, when we're talking specifically about housing, the environmentally sensitive area, some of the site standards, just because those are a little bit more tangible. So.
I have a question on the spreadsheet. Since you were talking about the green, purple, and the orange, what do they mean? There's no legend.
Yeah, well, that's new. I haven't seen that. This wasn't part of a.
Yeah. So.
Items in purple were substantially revised throughout the zoning process.
And then oranges.
Yeah, I guess I didn't include a legend for the orange. The orange was removed, essentially removed in the process. And then the green were essentially added in during the process. And when I say removed, I suppose it was, a lot of the times, like the, the whole intent and, and some of the important content associated, it wasn't literally just stripped from the ordinance and kept out of it altogether. Sometimes it did go into a new section, but did so kind of a little less substantially than the purple highlighted items did.
Yeah. So I think one thing that will be helpful for us to just is kind of talk about some of the policy, highlight some of the policy discussions that the zoning ordinance Subcommittee had, just to get, get some additional feedback from the Planning Commission. So, and we'll, we'll discuss that internally before coming back to you in, in two weeks.
Now that we're down this rabbit hole, is there a way that that suggestion list is available to the general public so they can see it, too?
What suggestion?
This whole.
It's in the packet.
Oh, okay, got it. Good point. Good point. I didn't know if there was a standalone document somewhere in a website.
We could, but yes, we could add it to the website because we should have.
Everybody's going to know to go.
Draft zoning ordinance, and we can definitely get a page on the website for that.
That'd probably be good.
But yes, it'll all be in the packets as well.
Yes. Paul?
I just have a point of personal privilege in thanking Claire for the report on the, and the status update on all the different projects from the last couple of years. I found that to be very helpful. I appreciate it. I only wish I was here at the time you presented it.
Well, Sam and I worked together on it, so.
Sam, thank you. And also, you know, once it's done, keep it up to date. And also, you know, once it's done, keep it up to date.
Will do.
Thank you.
We discuss that at length, just so you know. Yeah.
You can watch the recording.
Our upcoming meeting dates, looks like April 2 at 6:30. And then for those in the audience, and here, zoning ordinance special work sessions, March 19, April 16, and May 21 at 6:30 as well. Should I repeat those? Are you guys good? Okay, we got them. That's all, folks. I guess we're adjourned. Appreciate it, everybody.